Thank you. We're here. Okay. All right. It's 4:02. We'll call the meeting to order. I'll go ahead and lead everybody for the bucks of today. All right, right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let it be known, all five trustees are present. Ms. Givens, Mr. Williams, Mr. Yeasless, Mr. Praia, and myself, Mr. Helsford. Business from the floor. The board meeting is a business meeting of the board held in a public forum to comply with the Brown Act. It is not a town hall meeting with the board. This is the time for citizens to present problems or questions they feel the board should discuss. Individuals are encouraged to address the full board, not individual board members. The law prohibits the board from taking action on items not on the agenda. Request to speak card should be filled out in advance and presented to the superintendent's executive assistant. Instructions for submitting remote public comments can be found on our website, B U S D K twelve dot com, under the tab Board of Trustees. The board has a policy limiting any speaker to not more than three minutes. The board limits the total time for public input on each item or topic to fifteen minutes or five individual requests to speak. The president may review the submitted request to speak or take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue and may ask that additional persons speak only if they have something new to add. Citizens who have comments on or against a particular issue may be asked to provide a written statement for the record or to sign an agreement with the written comments of another citizen. All names will be memorialized in minutes. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentation depending on the topic and number of persons wishing to be heard. For the record, please state your name. Do you have any?
Not at this moment.
Okay. Then it is oral by them. We'll adjourn to closed session.
Every power of computers now have primary control of critical vehicle functions. Missed off at mission forty-one D. The first flight of the aerial discovery.
I request their services, and they provide a neutral investigation, which with Title IX, as I'm sure you know, can be quite complicated, because the process is very structured. And eventually, an investigative report is written and given back to the district. And then a neutral decision-maker, sometimes contracted through TNG, and sometimes someone in our district, will make a decision based on that investigation. So the whole process is all about being as fair as possible, right? Everyone is innocent until an actual violation is found. So the process is complicated, the process is structured, but we are doing our job as a district, maintaining all that documentation and working to just improve our processes as well. So on the next, on this slide that you're looking at right now, is just the definition of UCP, which is the Uniform Complaint Procedure. It is California-specific. And in a nutshell, it is about protected classes, right? So in order for something to be UCP, it's got to be discrimination against someone who is part of a protected class. And that can be someone who has different abilities, you know, sped. Or it can be someone who's from a particular nation or has a particular national origin. Those are the things that will stay with me as far as UCP, and other things will go on to usually Mr. Gutierrez. So again, brief Beck Talk. I did put a slide up here for questions, but don't go crazy, okay? Do you have any questions that I can answer at this juncture? And again, more specific district information will come to you in a different way.
Great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Leg claps better than none.
You appreciate it always.
Next, we'll go to Business from the Floor. The board meeting is a business meeting of the board, held in a public forum to comply with the Brown Act. It is not a town hall meeting with the board. This is a time for citizens to present problems or questions they feel the board should discuss. Individuals are encouraged to address the full board, not individual board members. The law prohibits the board from taking action on items not on the agenda. Requests to speak cards should be filled out in advance and presented to the superintendent's executive assistant. Instructions for submitting remote public comments can be found on our website, busdk12.com, under the tab Board of Trustees. The board has a policy limiting any speaker to not more than three minutes. The board limits the total time for public input on each item or topic to 15 minutes or five individual requests to speak. The president may review the submitted request to speak or take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue and may ask that additional persons speak, only if they have something new to add. Citizens who have comments on or against a particular issue may be asked to provide a written statement for the record or to sign an agreement with the written comments of another citizen. All names will be memorialized in minutes. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentation, depending on the topic and number of persons wishing to be heard. For the record, please state your name. All right. Next, we have Reports, Staff Reports. Williams, fourth quarter, 2425.
Mr. Godfrey.
Yes, Superintendent Tenahandre.
We'll just call them Beck Talks. And that'll happen at the second board meeting of the month, except on those months where you only have one. And then I'll, I'll do a little Beck Talk for you guys. But mainly this is just informative, to give you a little bit of background. I had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Williams in a, in a separate situation and, and he was just asking some questions. So, so we had thought that it would be an excellent idea to just share a little bit of information. And um, let's go ahead and get started, since my clicker's back there. So I just want to start by introducing myself. Some of you know me, I've been in Barstow since I was five years old. My dad moved us all here to be a, an army guy at Fort Irwin. And I've always lived in Barstow, really strong ties to the community. And every time I go away to school, I go to an ocean, but then I always wind up coming back to the desert. I went to UCSD for undergrad and then went to University of San Francisco School of Law and got my Juris Doctor there. And so education and law has always been two areas that I'm really interested in, that I've tried to just kind of keep in my life in many different ways. And then also just having a family full of teachers helps keep that education goal prominent all through all my activities. So as I said, my position is Title IX UCP Compliance Officer. We didn't know what that meant really when I was hired. So this year's been really exciting to build what that position means. So, so, so what does it mean? It means that I get complaints from the community, from employees, from students, from parents. And then um, my main duty in that capacity is to evaluate them, to see where they go. And we'll talk in a minute about how those pathways work, where I send complaints when they're not mine. But if they're Title IX or UCP, they're mine. Specific kinds of UCP, because UCP is broader. And we'll actually do a different Beck Talk on UCP specifically. So what is Title IX? And I'm not going to read the slides for everything, but for the specific language of the federal regulation, I'm actually going to read this. So Title IX is, "No person in the United States shall, on the basis of sex, be excluded from participation in, be denied the benefits of, or be subjected to discrimination under any educational program or activity receiving federal financial assistance." So that's the language, right? Every, every training I've gone to, they say it's so simple, it's so short, and yet it encompasses so much. So um, if we go to the next slide, we're going to talk about what exactly is behavior that is, that is encompassed by Title IX. So most of you guys, when you hear Title IX, you probably think about like sports teams, right? You think about um, access to uh, equipment or to opportunities for the girls' team versus the boys' team. And that is Title IX. But it also includes sex-based harassment and discrimination, which can be um, it's, it's broken down on the slide, but uh, you know, it's, it's about money, but it's also about everybody being treated equally and also being free from harassment. So there are a couple of different like subcategories of sexual harassment under Title IX. One of them is hostile environment. And for most school districts, I would guess that that is, that is uh, something that rears its head more often than not. There's also sexual assault, stalking, dating violence, domestic violence, quid pro quo. And quid pro quo, of course, meaning trading favors. Somebody says, "I'll, I'll do this for you if you do this for me." And usually that's a situation, of course, where someone has much more authority than the other party involved. So Title IX is all about keeping that from happening. And if in fact, something like that does happen, then it's all about documenting what we as a district are doing to make sure that we're preventing that, that we're training people, that we're holding people accountable if in fact, a violation is found. So what we're doing in our district right now, as far as how these complaints get sent out. So I, I receive a lot of the complaints. I think that people thought, when I first was hired, that I wasn't the compliance officer, I was actually the complaint officer, because I got absolutely everything under the sun, which was quite exciting for a while. And then as we all grew it and learned uh, what really is more beneficial for us, we developed some, some procedures and protocols. And so anything that deals with Title IX will come to me. Anything that deals with um, UCP as far as discrimination against protected classes, that'll come to me initially as well for evaluation. Um, we're going to talk a little bit more about that in a minute. But um, if it is a sped issue or a 504 issue, then that will go through Pupple Services to Dr. Reed. If it is a student safety issue, or an attendance issue, or a transportation issue, then that goes to Ms. Norman. And if it's in fact, a complaint against an employee, that goes to Mr. Gutierrez, the Assistant Superintendent of Personnel. So, so we have a lot of people, quite capable, knowledgeable people, who are all dealing with these issues. And I'm always trying to catch up on the knowledgeable part. So um, as far as what I'm doing on a day-to-day basis. So I receive complaints. We evaluate the complaints. If I send them out, I send them out. If there's something for me, then uh, as, as you all know, we contract with a company called TNG Consulting. And they represent our neutral investigators right now. I, I believe eventually the goal is to, to cut back a little bit on, on TNG and allow me and, and a potential department in the future to do the investigations and house. So what they provide though, is right now, a really neutral, knowledgeable entity. So, so a complaint comes to me, there's a potential for a problem. I bring it to TNG, they, I request their services. And they provide a neutral investigation, which with Title IX, as I'm sure you know, can be quite complicated, because the process is very structured. And um, eventually, an investigative report is written and given back to the district. And then a neutral decision maker, sometimes contracted through TNG and sometimes someone in our district, will make a decision based on that investigation. So, so it, they, the whole process is all about being as fair as possible, right? Everyone is innocent until an actual violation is found. So the, the process is complicated, the process is structured, but we are doing our job as a district, maintaining all that documentation and uh, working to just improve our processes as well. So on the next, on this slide that you're looking at right now, is uh, just the definition of UCP, which is the Uniform Complaint Procedure. It is California-specific. And in a nutshell, it is about protected classes, right? So in order for something to be UCP, it's gotta be discrimination against someone who is part of a protected class. And that can be uh, someone who has uh, different abilities, you know, uh, sped. Or it can be someone who's from a particular nation or has a particular national origin. Those are the things that will stay with me as far as UCP and other things will go on to uh, usually Mr. Gutierrez. So again, brief Beck Talk. I did put a slide up here for questions, but don't go crazy, okay? Do you have any questions that I can answer at this juncture? And again, more specific district information will come to you in a different way.
Great presentation.
Hey, thank you. Thank you very much, good.
Thank you.
Leg claps better than none.
I appreciate it, always.
Uh, next, we'll go to Business from the Floor. Uh, the Board Meeting is a business meeting of the Board, held in a public forum to comply with the Brown Act. It is not a town hall meeting with the Board. This is a time for citizens to present problems or questions they feel the Board should discuss. Individuals are encouraged to address the full Board, not individual Board members. The law prohibits the Board from taking action on items not on the agenda. Request to speak card should be filled out in advance and presented to the Superintendent's Executive Assistant. Instructions for submitting remote public comments can be found on our website, busdk12.com, under the tab Board of Trustees. The Board has a policy limiting any speaker to not more than three minutes. The Board limits the total time for public input on each item or topic to fifteen minutes or five individual requests to speak. The President may review the submitted request to speak or take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue and may ask that additional persons speak, only if they have something new to add. Citizens who have comments on or against a particular issue may be asked to provide a written statement for the record or to sign an agreement with the written comments of another citizen. All names will be memorialized in minutes. With Board consent, the President may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentation, depending on the topic and number of persons wishing to be heard. For the record, please state your name. All right. Uh, next we have uh, Reports, Staff Reports. Williams, Fourth Quarter, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Mr. Godfrey.
Yes, uh, Superintendent Ted Alejandra with San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools, does a quarter, quarterly review of all Williams School Districts. Uh, this is the July edition of that report. I'm happy to report that there were no findings as it relates to instructional materials, school accountability report cards, school facilities, and teacher assignments.
Thank you.
Anybody have any? Uh, next we have Monthly Cash Report, August twenty-five.
Mr. Beaton.
Thank you. As of the eighteenth of August, the district has seventy-five million, eight hundred eighty-eight thousand, six hundred sixty-four dollars and zeros and one cent, as noted in the San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools treasury.
Thank you. And next we have twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, uh, ten-day enrollment report and annual student count.
This also goes to Mr. Beaton.
So I wait for the spreadsheet to come up. Not.
There's a glitch on the system. You might have to uh, it's not us, it's.
I can continue. So if, in the yellow box on that spreadsheet, if you're able to see it on your devices, uh, looking at the ten-day average, our enrollment is six thousand, three hundred forty-seven as a average for the tenth day. Our actual in-person count is, for that same period, is five thousand, four hundred, which calculates to eighty-five point zero seven percent. Also, in comparison to last year's enrollment, from this year to last year at this time, the difference is twenty-three point seven. So we're right about where we were a year ago.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Uh, next we'll go to Reports, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board Members, Staff, and Guests. It is hard to believe we are nearly three weeks into the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. I have visited all schools and I am happy to see the smiling faces, classroom expectations, and strong instructional practices evident in our certificated staff. Our teachers have put in time, energy, and effort into making their classrooms amazing learning spaces for our students. I'd like to thank City Manager Rochelle Clayton for making time to meet with me regarding the field and bathrooms at Stringham Park. Barstow Unified School District has leased the park to the City of Barstow for nearly twenty years. In that time, the premises and improvements at the park have deteriorated and are in need of sprucing up. Mrs. Clayton assures me the City of Barstow has plans to do necessary work at Stringham Park in the near future. Mrs. Clayton and I also spoke about Barstow Police Department continuing to provide safety at the Avenue H Community Walking Track and the city's continued support for the School Resource Officer Program. On Wednesday, August thirteenth, we held our first Parent Guardian Student Community Alliance Meeting at Barstow Fine Arts Academy. The meeting was attended by several parents of students who attend Barstow Fine Arts Academy. Dr. Vinnie Williams reviewed the extension to the stipulative judgment recently signed into effect by the Superior Court of the State of California in the county of Los Angeles. Parents in attendance indicated their satisfaction with the many changes they have experienced across the district. Their greatest topic of discussion was increased field trips, which we will discuss with school site principals. Our next PG, PG SCA meeting is scheduled for October eighth, twenty-twenty-five, starting at four thirty PM and will be held at Barstow Fine Arts Academy. We encourage all BUSD, Parents, Guardians, Students, and Community Members to attend. The Superintendent's Executive Cabinet held quarterly meetings with CSEA's and BEA's Executive Boards. Executive Cabinet was able to provide information to our association partners regarding district plans for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six. CSEA and BEA brought their questions, comments, and insights with a focus on collaboration and inspiration. I'd like to give a huge shout-out to Holly Bowser, CTE Coordinator for BUSD. She and I attended the annual Mountain Desert Career Pathways Governing Board Meeting and Student Study Session with Coordinators on Friday, August twenty-second. We discussed what is work-based learning and MDCP's Work-Based Learning Report. We talked about future plans for MDCP and brainstormed ways, brainstormed ways we could celebrate MDCP's tenth anniversary. I truly appreciated the collaboration and support for our CTE programs as we work together to be a part of our students' light-filled moments during their academic journey this year with BUSD.
Thank you.
Uh, next we have Board Reports, Ms. Givens.
Hi, I don't really have a report. I do want to say um, I was able to meet with PBIS yesterday and it was an amazing meeting. And so I'm looking forward to working and um, seeing a PTO come to fruition and other things we can do with the community. It was suggested by another colleague that we uh, work on as a community agency, um, conflict resolution for parents. So just hoping to be more supportive and that's all I have today.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Well, um, yes, was it yesterday, Saturday? What day was it? One of these past few days. I um, we had, it was Saturday. We had a basketball clinic at uh, Barstow.
High School.
Bar, Barstow High School. I was in attendance, I was also a sponsor of the clinic itself. Thank you to Barstow, um, BUSD for um, the help with the, with the gym. And the custodian was a fantastic, he was fantastic, great guy. He made me do the mopping, but that was okay. I did ask him for the mop. But the clinic was amazing. If you would have been there, these kids had a blast. We gave out gift cards, raffle prizes. We had plenty of snacks for them to eat, to get the energies. The clinic wasn't easy. Uh, it was kids from six to seventeen. And uh, the coaches did a really good job. Want to thank Nike, um, Go Go Barstow for being there, Barstow Youth Sports Coalition. Had a great time. I think the kids got a lot out of it. And, and we really want to thank uh, uh, BUSD for uh, letting us use the, the gym. So that was great. I'm doing something the moron, I can't remember what it is. I must be tired or something. I'll tell you next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jesus?
Yes, I do. I, it was the first, uh, it was the first Monday after school, the school started. A parent asked me to give her and her son a ride to Cameron School. He uh, didn't get his shots, his immunity, his shots and time and stuff, so he started school that Monday. And uh, we went to Cameron School and we went into the principal's office and greeted with smiles from the secretary. That little kid had the biggest smile you ever seen in your life. They escorted us to the, his kindergarten class. And the teacher met us with a smile and the kid was all happy and it was awesome. And she asked me to, you know, they, the bus barn in the school district has got, the turnover to get a ride, it takes about a day before, you know, that he can get on the bus. So uh, went to pick him up after school. We got in there, we got in the car. And, and first we did this, and first, and then we went and played and then we had, then we had the lunch and stuff. The lunch was real good. I mean, it was so awesome, you know? You know, and that's why I got in this position, see things like that. You know, it's just, it was just uh, it was just great, you know? And uh, and the secretaries for the school district, I mean, they're, they're the backbone, man. I mean, you know, they, they do, they do it all, you know? Every, every employee does. Went to a potluck Friday, Scott, thank you. And you know, it was, it was awesome, you know? And you know, I, I was eating some chili there. And I told somebody, it was the first time I ever ate beans. And they said, "Oh, really?", you know? And I said, "Who made the chili?". And so I said, "Carmel". I was, oh, I was disappointed, man. My grandma would be mad at me for eating canned beans, you know? And uh, and now uh, when I played high school, I played my first uh, varsity uh, experience as I was a sophomore. Uh, I played for Coach Davis. He never cussed, he never grabbed nobody, he didn't raise his voice. He was an awesome coach. He was the only coach to go undefeated and win the CIF title for us. He uh, led by example. There was this kid, he was a freshman practicing with him, uh, ready to make the varsity football team. And it uh, at that time, they had to practice six o'clock after baseball and track was over in the spring and right before spring training. And they ran plays in the gym. They have eleven defensive guys against seven offensive guys and they went at it. And after practice, everybody was so tired, you'd get in front of the steps, the east, the east, northeast side of the boys' gym. And this kid had uh, P F Flyers, I don't know if you guys from Drifty's, a dollar twenty-nine tennis shoes. Had electrical tape, a little bit of uh, duct tape and some electric, keeping them together. And the juniors, uh, incoming seniors and juniors the following year would make fun of this kid, you know, more or less bullying him. And uh, it happened for about two weeks. And uh, at the last uh, Friday, the Thursday before, when we ended it, we're going to go to spring practice, May fifteenth. Uh, Coach Art Davis was an avid uh, tennis player and he had these kangaroo skin tennis shoes, awesome. He asked that young man, he says uh, "What size shoe do you wear?". Kid said twelve. Took them off to speak, gave it to him, and walked home and it sucks. That young man was me. And uh, that's the kind of leadership we need. Somebody with morals, you know? You know, somebody that uh, lead by example. You know, somebody who has a little intestinal fortitude, you know? And then we got on to the employee, you know, all of, you know, everybody, no one's perfect in this school district. We need to treat everybody the way you want to treat your own son or your own daughter or your grandkid, you know? Nobody's perfect. You know, you don't come to work to exercise your ego on another employee, you know? And then uh, we need to place principles before personalities, you know? And uh, when I coached, you know, uh, I would tell the kids that uh, when it gets tough, you know, two things are going to happen. You're either going to roll up your sleeves and get the job done, or you're going to crumble like a stale cookie, you know? And uh, when I was um, running for office, I didn't really promise anything. I went to a few uh, forums, I talked to the two unions. But I did say that uh, no man, woman, or child or group was going to intimidate me or sway me to vote a different way. If I told you the way I was going to vote on Thursday, my God, Tuesday afternoon, that's the way I was going to vote. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Pratt?
Uh, there's no way I can follow that up. I, I don't have anything to report.
Alrighty.
I just wanted to, I guess, two things. Uh, one comment on, I'd say, oh, the overall positivity that I felt about this school year. I mean, normally there's always, you know, the same traditions that we have. And but I really feel like this year's a little bit different. I feel like just overall, I'm seeing a lot more smiles, I'm hearing a lot more laughing. Uh, not, everything's perfect, but um, I, I do think that we are going on a positive note. And I do think that that's a credit to the work that everyone here is doing. Uh, everybody at the district office, all the administrators, all the teachers, all the classified. I don't think this happens out of nowhere or for no reason. So I, I do think that it's, everybody's putting in the work and I think that we're getting on that track to start enjoying the fruits of what everybody has been working towards. So just wanted to say thank you to everyone for that. Um, and also uh, to just touch a little bit that we just got done doing a governance training um, ourselves um, as the Board. So what we're trying to work on is getting all of our new um, policies, procedures, mission, vision, getting all these goals, getting everything aligned um, all the way around. And I think we're all doing good strides and getting everybody on the same page. So I, I like the good things, so thank you to everybody.
Uh, next we have the Student Representative Report.
Hi, everybody. Um, my name is Serena, I'm the ASB Senior Class Vice President. Um, and ASB just has to report that right now, we're working on all our Hoco, homecoming events. So like the game, the football game, the assembly, the dance, just getting everything organized for that. And also um, great news to report is that we have sixty-two members in ASB this year and that's like the most we've had in I think like a decade or so. So, yeah. Um, also, we were asking if any, if anyone could donate like boxes, like cardboard and stuff. So we, because we're bringing back floats this year for homecoming, like the royalty. That's about it, thank you.
All, all-size boxes or preferably large or?
Any box, we'll take anything. Yeah, just like if you have something laying out, like an Amazon package, just throw it over.
Mrs. Cole, don't you, doesn't Nutrition Services have lots of boxes?
We'll take them, we'll take them.
I'll hook you up with Christina Williams, the lead at the high school.
Yeah, you can um, contact Mr. Embryani, you know? Okay. Yeah, he'll tell you where, pretty sure you can just drop them off at high school, but we can use them. We'll definitely use them.
You're about to be inundated.
He told, he told me to ask.
Beginning of the year is the perfect time, because that's when everybody's getting all the new supplies and everything like that. So preparing our classrooms, things like that, it's the beginning of the year's perfect time.
We'll definitely put them to use.
Well, thank you. You're definitely more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you would like to hear. Um, or if you'd like to leave, you're more than welcome to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next we have Representatives Reports, BEA.
We got a slight internet problem. We had no uh, power. All right, so um, good evening, everybody. On behalf of BEA, I want to begin by um, sharing that we recently held our first quarterly meeting with a facilitator. We found this to be uh, extremely positive and productive and we appreciate the district's support in making this happen. Moving forward, we respectfully request that these quarterly meetings not be scheduled on non-workdays for Executive Board Members, so that everyone can fully participate without conflict. Um, I also want to bring your attention to an important matter concerning this, our sixth grade math materials. We've been informed that the new math books will not arrive until September twenty-second, which would affect BIS and STEM. Okay. And uh, while we understand the delays can happen, we ask the district to take some proactive steps to support our teachers and students in the meantime. Specifically, we're asking that the district check in with the sixth grade teachers to ensure they have been trained and feel comfortable using Think Central. That's the online component of our Go Math program. But we have a lot of new teachers that probably have had zero training yet, because they're new. And if teachers are not, have not received training yet or do not feel ready to rely solely on online systems, we request that photocopies of the necessary chapters um, are prepared and provided for them. This is a practical request. Teachers are limited access to copy paper and our prep time is already stretched with numerous responsibilities. And as Shanna brought up, I didn't think about it, but there's also not going to be enough space or enough photocopy machines for all the teachers to be in the same room at the same time trying to make photocopies. Because there's that many sixth grader at BIS. STEM might be different, not as many. So it's not reasonable to expect teachers, it's not reasonable to expect teachers to spend their valuable preparation time photocopying textbooks that should have already been available to the students. In short, we want to ensure our students are not losing learning time due to logistical challenges and that our teachers are supported rather than burned out by them. Uh, thank you for your time and ongoing commitment to working with us and, and our students, thanks.
Thank you. CSEA?
Let's speak from here, do I need to go over there?
It's up to you.
Um, so for CSEA, we have just returned from our, it's been about a month since we've returned from our annual conference, uh, which was in Reno this year. Bringing back all that knowledge and information to our membership. We have our first meeting of the new twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Tues, uh, sorry, today's Tuesday, Thursday, again, what day is it? Everyone's been, like um, President said, you know, excited to get back to school, meeting all the new students, new staff members, um, getting into our uh, practices with the students and such, teaching them the rules and things like that. So everybody's been excited for that. We're excited, new positions are coming, as you see later on in the agenda. We have new positions. We have new positions that are getting created, so that's nice to get new, new people in, more people to help with the workload. More students, more workload, so more staff is nice. We do have some MOUs we're already working on for this year, also opening up negotiations for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Our whole contract is open this year for the whole three-year term, so just a lot of things already in the works and moving forward, so. Looking forward to just continuing with that and getting things rolling for the school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Personnel Commission.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, staff and distinguished guests. This is the report from the Personnel Commission. We currently have zero interviews in progress. We have four recruitments that are in the testing stage. And zero recruitments that are open, which has closed the recruitment. We currently have three hundred and eighty classified employees, one hundred and seventy-eight full-time employees, one hundred and twenty-two. Benefited part-time and eighty non-benefited part-time employees. As always, we have fifteen classified management. On the vacancies and some of the classifications, on the campus safety, we have two vacancies, one at Henderson and one at the high school. Plus, there's a newly created position at STEM, so that would be mega-three. We're currently in testing stage for that recruitment. And as soon as we finish the testing, we can rank, create our list and move forward to hiring and interviews. As far as some of the other classifications that we're testing, we're testing for. By the way, we're testing for the next three weeks, so we're just testing wall-to-wall here, because there's so many people we need to test. Translator, interpreter for the para. Para sand, campus safety, I believe we still have some nutrition services ones that may be out there testing, so it's. You know, AM, PM testing for like twenty-one days practically. What else do we have for you? We're doing a lot of onboarding, primarily some of the substitutes for office assistant. Para, also a lot of noon duties are being onboarded, and some of the newly hired, NSW ones, we hear thunder out there. We also want to report that we're looking into that posting our positions broader in, out there in the community. And I've been in contact with Zipcruder, which is one of the top online generator. They reach out to about a hundred websites that are out there for, for job postings. And I believe that's the direction we're gonna go. I've got one more meeting with them tomorrow. We'll make that decision so we can post our positions there as well. Our next meeting for the Personnel Commission is September eleventh at four thirty PM in this room, and that is the report for this, this week. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
On your custodian sub-list, do you have? You know, do you have one or?
Yes, we have custodians that are available and the subcolored should have those names.
How many is on that list?
Number-wise, I know we had about nine of them at the last time I checked, could be more or less. Some individuals may not be interested, maybe others have been added since.
Right on.
Thank you.
One, I asked you about this before. Because I mentioned. Time-wise, does it take so much time to hire someone through the whole process? Have we even thought about looking at? Have we, you guys discussed? Ways of speeding up that process?
We've been looking at different options. One is to digitize our onboard paperwork, so it's something that would gain us some time. Some of the other things that we can do are in our testing, so we. We have been telling people and we've announced it at our meetings that sometimes individuals apply and they're not, they don't qualify. They don't meet the, they don't have a certificate and so on and so forth. That costs, causes us a lot of work if we have to test those individuals, so we told them we're gonna try to screen those out, we're giving. Information ahead of time, making those announcements so that we shrink some of those lists and we're only focusing on those individuals we know we can actually get, will produce something. Now, something like the paras, which we need so many of them, we do all sorts of bending to try to broaden, broaden that net, right? Capture as many as we can and we'll work with people, give them, you know, send them emails, reminders, right, to make sure they submit completed applications. But generally, we won't do that because that costs us a lot of work. It's a lot of repetitive work that we don't need. And the other things are the posting or the transfer of the. Timeline, those twenty-one days, those we can't really go work, work around that. I believe with, at least with this pair recruitment, we should be ready to go in a couple of weeks. Once we have that list. One of the other things we did here is we did a group interview, so we set up several stations here and we were interviewing for a time. So we could try to process them faster. Some individuals went to several other tables to interview with different sites, so we were trying to get creative with that. We're also making conditional offers on the spot, so, so that we can kind of move them through the process and we send them straight to. Try to start their onboarding if they're qualified, so we've been tweaking around with different ways. I believe, you know, there's still a technology thing that we could, we could use and I'm investigating that, and also some of the onboarding that we can kind of speed up a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have the adoption of the agenda with a corrected copy K six A four extra-duty employment. Certificated contract academic leads and or coordinators. Can I get a motion to approve with the corrected copy?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll go to the consent agenda. I have three items myself for pulling is a. Are we ready? K one, one. K two, one. And K three, two. And we have.
Yes, I would like to pull K two, three. Two, five. And K three, one.
Okay. And first we will go to, oh, yep, sorry. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda with items pulled?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And first we'll go to K one, one consultant agreement strategic solutions for school safety.
Yes, so if, as you look at some of the attachments for this consultant agreement, this is our current consultant that we use. To train our campus safety and security, they'll, he also trained our SAMS. And I believe that was one of our school administrators as well that was trained. He has been training our campus safety and security for the past year. We've had about. Five sessions or so, maybe four, four or five, and all aspects, some of them, proper use of the radio. Proper techniques for communicating, there was some team building. The, he also worked, our last training was the active shooter training, so we, we, he brought up. One of his colleagues to help him with his training. It was very well received. And finally, he's also been doing some security assessments at the sites with a different campus, campus safety and security staff. And also the administrative staff there, some of the safety assessments. He has issued recommendations from all aspects of safety, things that he touches, either radio used, the. Cameras, the wrapper system, all these things that we use of technology. And for this particular item that you see here, his, his contract or what we had approved was for the previous fiscal year. And so we need to approve this to. Ensure that we can use it for the current fiscal year, and also the trainings he performed and at the end of July, that's already in this fiscal year, so. We kind of need that to, to clean out some of that, that payment that we need to do for, for the current trainings. And this is submitted to you for your approval, and we recommend approval for the sign.
You guys have any questions?
I'm just, I'm happy to see this going. This, this will go a long way.
I had a couple of questions. With the recommendations that he has whenever he's going through all of this. Is there any way that we can see that as the board after he gets done with going through with the administrators? Just so then we can kind of take a look at it and see where that rolls into the overarching school safety plan?
Yes, I can share that with you.
The other one was as far as the training, is any of it the actual, because I know there's kind of like a distinction between. And I'm sure I'm butchering the terminology here, but with the school safety officers or the campus safety. And as far as like the, who is trained to be able to physically either restrain or diffuse physical altercation, is that part of this training?
There is, there was a separate training that we had, which is the CPI, the Crisis Intervention Training, that was a two-day training, so. The SAMS and all the, all the campus safety and security were trained on that particular training, so that's more for the hands-on, is a two-person approach. And they kind of go over all the proper ways to put contact if they have to do contact with an individual. And also de-escalation techniques, so there was a lot of, there's different levels, right, that you, you eventually reach, but there's de-escalation you just kind of.
Gotcha, okay. But so all the SAMS and everyone that we have employed now, they all and are at the schools currently all have that training?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you. If everybody else is good, can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And next is K two, one, in-service education.
Yes, Mr. Godfrey.
Yes, this is a virtual training by CASBO and by the Fiscal Services Department. Legal aspects and hands-on accounting for student body organizations. We have representatives from Barstow Junior High School, Lenwood Elementary. Barstow STEM Academy and the Fiscal Department. Essentially, what they'll be doing is working towards maintaining an effective ASB program for grades, grades K through twelve. With a special emphasis on how to maintain fiscal accountability, legal compliance, and accuracy within ASB accounts. And Student Activity Fund, focusing on legal compliance, effective fiscal accountability. Identifying and avoiding unallowed fees and expenses and master accounting and financial management techniques.
Thank you. I had pulled out, I was just a little bit curious on the, the last part with the student body organization part of it, but. Good to hear everybody's getting the training, good to keep all the dollars in-house as much as possible and also. Following all the rules and laws and all that, so good to hear. Hopefully, we can expand out PTOs everywhere around the district, so good stuff.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any other questions or comments?
Not this time.
Alright, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next we have K two, three memorandum of understanding, PK.
Mr. Godfrey.
Yes, Ms. Fisher will present this.
Central High School is seeking approval for their PK Parent Institute for Quality Education contract. Similarly, we've seen before, Central will be working with PK to offer parenting classes. That regard, in regards to the Central High School students, so Central High School students will attend these as well. And PK will be offering the courses with a little bit of SEL, digital citizenship. Just overall information about how to help their students be successful in school.
Any questions, comments?
Yes, I have a question. Is this, this is not the first year for this program, is it?
For Central, no. And for the program, no, it's not the first year.
What are the numbers that we have?
As far as attendance?
Yeah.
It does vary by school site. For Central High School. I know that the contract says up to fifty. I believe that they had around ten the last time that they offered this class. What Central is looking at this year, if you might have noticed in the contract, is they are offering AM and PM classes. And this time as well, since it is virtual, they're going to, the AM sessions will be virtual, but they'll also open up the school. In case parents don't have technology to be able to access the Zoom, the parents can come into the school. And the Zoom session will be broadcast for them, so that they have the opportunity to be able to participate in that manner. So they're hoping to have more in attendance in that manner.
So. At what number will we not have this? At what number of participation will we not have it?
I think for the most part, PK will hold the sessions regardless. I know that it mentions in there. You know, like maximums and that type of thing, but, but they've been working with us, especially knowing that Central High School is a continuation high school with a low population. I don't foresee that they would not hold the courses, the course for the parents.
No, I, I'm sure of that, but. At what point, based off the numbers you got into, want to do this? Are we gonna say, well, it's not really worth it because you only got two, two parents want to do it? I'm seeing what I'm saying.
I do, but I think that even if we have one parent, we'll still hold the classes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, because even one parent is one parent. Who we can reach.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
I'll just say a comment. I, I think the classes are great. I think anything that we can do as far as building those bridges, connecting those dots. I think any, any amount is, is a good amount, so I'm a strong advocate for that, so I think it's all good stuff. With that, can I get a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have K two, five consultant agreement Missoula Children's Theater.
Mr. Godfrey?
Yes, Barstow Fine Arts Academy is requesting to approve a proposal. For hosting a week-long drama camp at Barstow Fine Arts Academy to be held during the parent-teacher conference week. Basically, what they're looking to do is work in partnership with Missoula Children's Theater. The program will offer a new, unique opportunity for students to engage in a comprehensive theatrical experience culminating in a live performance. It happens after school. Grades one through four are invited to come participate and to, it's not tryout, what is it called, Rebecca? That's the word, I am not a performer, so they all get a chance to audition. Students are selected to hold roles. Generally, they're able to offer roles to every student who wants to engage. Last year in twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four, there were sixty-two, sixty-three students. That were able to participate, and it covers all of the VAPA standards that Barstow Fine Arts Academy. Was. Developed as a school for, and this is another effort to move in that direction. And I think you'll see later on in our agenda, if it's not this one, it might be the one coming, we're requesting that more staff be. Hired for that school to really ensure the VAPA experience across all four genres. And this is presented to you for your approval. And this is presented to you for your approval.
And, and, and he answered all my questions.
He answered all my questions.
So thank you.
If no one else has any questions, can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Second. All in favor? Uh, next we have K three, one SBCSS agreement number twenty-five, twenty-six, zero, three, five, five, San Bernardino County Superintendent Schools.
Yes, Dr. Reed.
Yes, hi, good evening. This is being brought to you for approval. It is a contract agreement with San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools and Desert Mountain Salfa. We contract with them for occupational therapy and physical therapy for students who are on section five oh four plans. They, those are students who don't qualify for an IEP. So they have a five oh four plan due to a disability. And the five oh four plan supports them, and many times they have occupational therapy or physical therapy. So we have to contract out for those services. So this contract is brought to you for approval.
Anyone have any questions?
So it's, it's seven to eight hundred per student, up to ten. How many do we normally have in, in any given year?
Last year, two. It's usually around two, one to two per year.
So what I was concerned about, so if, say we have three, the total contract is ninety-three thousand.
If it goes over that.
What I'm concerned is if we only use three, do we still pay the ninety-three?
No, we contract with them and they bill us for the services rendered.
Got it.
So as, yeah.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Can I get a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
All in favor? And K two, two Arrowhead Regional Medical Center Breathe Mobile Program School Site Agreement, two thousand twenty-five to two thousand thirty.
It's actually K three, two, and it's going to go to Dr. Reed as well.
This is for the San Bernardino County. We, it doesn't cost us anything. It's a free service. It's very much like the vaccination clinics that we have for the immunizations. They come and the Breath Mobile will service students who have asthma. They'll do screenings for them. It's like a checkup for those students. The parents can sign up for an appointment. We can refer them. They bill through medical insurance, so there's no cost to the district. We are allowing Arrowhead Regional Medical Center to utilize our facilities to bring the Breath Mobile to drive it and park it and have the students come and be seen.
Nice. Do they, if, say if, if you, it's like, so a student has asthma, they either get identified or they already know whenever they go there. How does, do they just talk to the, say their insurance carrier or like, say a student needs an inhaler or something because they have asthma? Does that, do they connect those dots or do they just let the parents know or how does, from that point, is that?
They, they will inform the parents of what is needed. They help with, if it's medication, they, they help with those treatments. We have our school nurse who is available to also facilitate that information from the Arrowhead Regional to the school site if medication, if parents need to get approval for medication to be taken at the school site. So they help facilitate that. I might also, they provide medications. They help support that type of therapy.
Thank you. Anyone else have any other questions, comments? I'll make the motion to approve. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? And I believe that's everything. Okay, now we can go into discussion. Discussion items, first general, L one, one information on revisions to board policies and administrative regulations in the six thousands.
And this is an inclusion item for this reading to allow the board to review Board Policy six one, four, one point two, Recognition of Religious beliefs and Customs, six, six point four, one point two, sorry, point one, Sexual Health and HIV/AIDS Prevention Instruction. And six one, four, two point one, Same Sexual Health and HIV/AIDS Prevention Instruction. And six one, four, two point eight, Comprehensive Health Education Policy. And these are the draft review for the board, and they will be brought back at the September nine board meeting for approval.
September, the second one is September.
September twenty-third.
Yes.
Board waiting for approval.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you. Uh, next we have Educational Services, L two, one Barstow Area Consortium for Adult Education, twenty-five, twenty-six. Consortium Designee Appointment.
Yes, Mr. Godfrey.
Yes, we have been part of the BACAE group for at least ten years now. I've been involved in it for all ten years. Thank goodness. Our state changed the way, the way that they funded adult ed and moved away from a direct funding model to a consortium model. And about two or three years in, they moved back to a direct funding model where we are funded by the number of students that we enroll. Not only do we have to enroll them, but they have to matriculate. Similar to what we do with TK, TK through twelve. It's not just enrollment, it's also, it's also attendance. At the adult ed level, there's a requirement for an assessment pre and post. There's also a requirement to report how many credits. If it's a high school graduation program, how many credits are being earned? If it's GED test prep, there's a requirement to report how many students completed the program and also passed the test. With that, we're required as members of the consortium to have two designees that represent Barstow Unified School District on your behalf. And in this item, we're requesting that my colleague here, our CBO, as well as myself, Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, be identified as the two representatives to this consortium. And during it, with that, we do vote on your behalf for items that come up.
Thank you for the information. I wasn't an initial question that I had, but as you were talking, I developed one. So if, with switching back as far as the, the funding model going back on ADA, does it work the same? Like how on our end on K twelve, as far as our staffing has to be on total numbers? And then we only get paid on ADA? Is it the same in the adult ed where like your total enrollment is how the staff?
Um, that's a local decision. It depends on your teaching model. If you have an independent studies program, you can probably have more students per staff, for example. In our case, we mirror a lot of what is happening at Silver Valley Unified School District, where it's mostly an independent studies model. The other component that's important to remember is the GED test prep, which I would say about twenty-five percent of our enrollees take advantage of that. So yes, in some cases, but they are kind of two separate decisions.
Makes sense. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions, comments?
I just hear a lot of good things about it. Yeah, actually, adult ed, there are a lot of good things about our adult ed.
Yeah, and if you attend our graduation, it's one of the best in town.
Make sure I do that.
All right, can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
All in favor? All right, uh, next we have Pupil Services, L four, one Purchase Order, August fifth, twenty twenty-five to August eighteen, twenty twenty-five.
It's actually Business Services that will be handed over to Mr. Beaton.
And I'm.
It's okay.
Uh, the district is recommending the board approve one hundred and eleven purchase orders. This is in the attached purchase order board report totaling six million, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-three cents.
Big numbers. I was curious on the full mines with the two different amounts and purchase orders, what the reason for the differentiation?
So for the top line there, you see that, that'll be the teachers that we're employing. And then on the second line, the sixty-five hundred resource, that's for our case managers. And so that's the reason we differ. One thing to point out too, we have that, we contracted for that amount, but we're only going to be invoiced for services that we're using. So we have that flexibility to go up if we need to, but George has done a great job hiring teachers, so.
Does anyone else have any questions, comments? Can I get a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Personnel Services, Certificated L six, A one Public Hearing of Provisional Intern Pip Permits for PIPS for Educators for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Recommending the Board of Trustees adjourn to a public hearing to provide an opportunity for the board to receive input concerning the proposed provisional intern permit. Those, the tongue twister. Uh, six oh three. Will reconvene, following a public hearing, recommend that the Board of Trustees approve the submission to the state of said permits pertaining to specific California teaching credential requirements. I get a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
All in favor? Next is L six, A two Employment of Certificated Contract Personnel for the twenty-six school year.
Mr. Gutierrez.
Yes, thank you. So we have in front right here is we recommend the approval of Nicole McClure. She's going to help us at Scully Elementary fill a vacancy in third grade classroom. And the hearing that we just had was for her PIP. And the superintendent recommends approval.
Any questions, comments?
Sounds good to me.
All right, yeah, good to see. Can I get a motion to approve?
I approve. Second.
All in favor? And next we have L six, A three Establishment of One Certificated Teaching Art Position.
Mr. Gutierrez.
Yes, thank you. So we're, we're recommending to the board to approve a certificated art position. We've been trying for many years to create a true VAPA pathway at Barstow Junior High School, and I think this one closes the loop. We have, we have music, we have dance, we have drama, and now the art. So I am very pleased to bring this to the board for approval.
Nice. Is this just, just in general? Are we opening perspective for this school year or just in general for the position?
We have the person already, so.
I didn't want to, I didn't want to say it, but.
This is a ratification, so she's already started, so.
Cool.
Yeah.
Only one?
Any other questions, comments? I'll make the motion to approve. Can I get a second? All in favor? Uh, next we have Classified, L six, B one Supplemental Assignment Translator/Interpreters Spanish/English Limited Term Substitute.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Heather Reed, Director of People's Services, identified a need to provide services for translation interpretation of IEPs. And we're recommending the board approve the supplemental substitute assignment.
Are these also related as far as, because I know uh, Mr. Ortiz said we were just doing translator either testing or something in the process?
So we currently have a limited term person in there supporting the department. Yeah.
Okay.
Any other? Want to add, Dr. Reed, I'm sorry?
Oh, no, yes, we, the additional support translating the IEPs. And right now we do have someone working out a class in that position as we're testing and going through the hiring process.
All right, uh, can I get a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
All in favor? Uh, next, L six, B two Establishment of Classified Positions, two Custodians.
There you go.
So what we have before you here is, uh, present to the board approval of two positions, three point five hour positions. Uh, Mr. Scott Godfrey, Assistant Superintendent of Ed Services, is looking to increase services at Barstow Fine Arts Academy and Henderson Elementary to support after-school programs with the Champions Program. And it's, when we do add more work, we need to add more people. Get into the board for approval.
Makes sense to me. Any other questions, comments, anyway?
Can those subs move into that position?
Potentially, yes. Potentially, yes. Right? And yes.
Can I get a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
All in favor? And L six, B three Approval, approve the duties of the Nutrition Services Operation Manager.
Yeah, thank you. And we actually have a guest speaker for this item.
Um, good evening, Board, Director of Board, and the rest of the board. I'm Veronica Calderon. I'm Director of Nutrition Services. Um, I have been here, I'm going on my third year in January. And I do, I do have to say it's been an absolute pleasure, and I do have to echo on the positivity. Definitely have been welcomed, felt like a superstar, Cameron. I was like, oh, wow, secretaries made me feel great. So I definitely appreciate the positivity. And I am pushing that and encouraging our staff as well. And our staff has had a very positive start of the year as well. So to give a little bit of history on where this position came about, probably within my first year, I realized we have a big department. Our department services, the entire Barstow Unified School District. In twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, there were ten school sites, one central kitchen. Now in twenty-four, in this twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we went up to thirteen school sites with one central kitchen. The schools that were added were Barstow Fine Arts Academy, Barstow Intermediate, and Ingles. In addition, we used to serve Save the Children. That has been replaced by Champions, and we are servicing more schools and students. The services I can attest have doubled in size since Save the Children. School meals, more than, more often than not, we have children that, these are the home meals that they're receiving for the day. And so I feel strongly that our department is vital to the success of our students' academic success. In twenty-two, twenty-three, there were sixty-five positions in Nutrition Services. When I came in, there were twenty-two vacancies, so about a third of the workforce was not filled. In twenty-three, twenty-four, we made a great, positive forward motion within our department and went from sixty-five positions and only six vacancies. Fast forward to this school year, we started with having sixty-five positions available and we, we had ten vacancies. We have since worked on adding positions so that we can directly provide services to Champions and ensure that we have the accountability, transparency, and are doing the services that are required for our students. With the added positions, we are at eighteen vacancies. I did not realize that we had fine arts also joining Champions, so hopefully soon we'll be adding one more position, which takes us to a total of seventy-two positions. Thirteen sites and one central kitchen that I manage with, I do have to introduce Tammy Trujillo is here along my side as one of my right-hand persons, Anne Stanley. as one of my right hand persons, um, and Stanley, um, Stanley Tasse, um, between the three of us, um, we, we handle everything um, when it comes to nutrition services. Um, additionally, we have three active substitutes that support our entire department. With that, um, I am excited to share that some of the positive things that we have done is we've revamped our high school services. We continue to refine and revamp our junior high services. Um, we are bringing in equipment to support our growth and the change in the elementary and the secondary levels of service. Um, and our goals and priorities are to continue bringing in fresher options, including increased scratch cooking, which we currently do fully from scratch once a week, as well as semi scratch cooking, which we currently do at least another two times a week. Um, we have started implementing fresher produce options as well as working on quality versus quantity. Um, we've redeveloped SOPs and we've established our procedures throughout our nutrition department as well as rolled out additional professional development to all of our nutrition service staff and revamping this year's annual training. Um, sorry, I got a little flustered, nervous. Um, the focus for our manager that is needed for our department um, is to provide support to all of our staff. Um, I'm one person and I strongly feel that my role is for the development of our menu, providing services to our staff, program management. But um, I am looking for additional staff to provide the much needed service that our staff needs. Um, the goals and focus for our manager is going to be an emphasis on monitoring food safety and maintaining all of the health standards, continuing to refine and enhance our nutrition service department. Continue to elevate and provide support to increase the quality of our food, increase onsite monitoring and support and supporting with the evaluation of our employees. Um, the growth throughout our program includes over nineteen thousand breakfasts served more this last year in comparison to the twenty three, twenty four school year. Uh, over eleven thousand more lunch meals than in the prior school year. Over twenty one thousand suppers have been served more than the prior school year. And nine thousand more summer school meals higher than the twenty three, twenty four school year. In total, that is over sixty one thousand meals, approximately almost two thousand, uh, sixty two thousand more than in the last school year. I have to applaud and thank my team um, for all that they have done. But with this position, I feel that we will be able to better serve our staff so that they in turn can better serve our students.
Thank you, Ms. Calderon. And this items presented to the board for approval.
Do you have any questions, comments?
Yes, I got. You're a right hand man there. I uh, worked with her at the high school and she was a cafeteria worker and I was a custodian. I can remember her helping the, my football players and stuff. One guy was was acting up in the classroom and I walked up to him, I'm gonna tell Tammy, I need, oh, please don't tell Tammy. And I think she remembers the guy's name, but we won't say it here. Here's a big guy. Thanks for your service, Tammy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other questions, comments? Can I get a motion to approve?
I will approve.
I second.
All in favor? Does anybody have any items, future board meetings they'd like to bring up? All right. And can I get a, or do we need to go to another closed session? Okay, uh, can I get a motion to adjourn? All in favor?